Really sticky.
Well, good morning, board. Great to see you again today. Hope you got some rest after a long day yesterday. We're here today to talk through our private activity bond allocation with today Melissa Shiri, our manager for housing policy and community investments division. So today's gonna be a little bit different. So every year we do come to the board to talk about our annual private activity bond or PAB allocation. This year we'll be doing that, but in addition to that, in going through this year's private activity bond allocation process, some items came up in conversations with Maker Housing Partners that there is a need to look at our 23 and 24 allocations and possibly make some adjustments to that. So we're gonna start a presentation, actually kind of going back in time, talking through our 23 and 24 allocations and what Makers request is for that. We'll try to get some consensus from the board on those items before moving to 25, but also knowing that the 25 presentation could in fact maybe change the conversation on 23, 24. We'll certainly circle back at the end as well to make sure nothing changed for 23, 24. I realize what I said was probably a little bit cryptic, but I think it'll make sense in a moment. Once we, once we get, once we dive in. So we'll start 23, 24, and then we'll move on to our kind of more normal process for to the 20, 25 allocation. So with that, I'll hand it over to Melissa to get us kicked off.
Thank you, Chase. As you can see on your screen, here is a background reminder of what happened 23, 24. So starting with the 2023 allocation, we were awarded 6.9 million approximately, which was assigned to Maker Housing Partners for the renovations of Overlook at Thornton. That project, the financing is complete, renovations are still in progress at this point, but there's no need at this point for the PAB to be used at this project. Their maker utilized about $2 million of the bond cap for this project, which there is 4.8 million remaining in bond cap. Those, the bond cap must be issued by December 31st, 2026, so this is a more time sensitive request. And we'll get in more detail here in a minute. For 2024, we were allocated 7.3 million approximately, also assigned to Maker Housing Partners. If you remember last year, we talked about assigning to Boyers or now at this point, we know the project is the wellby, as you approved yesterday for land use. And also Devco Development, which is off of 64th and Lowell. Devco did not receive 4% tax credits, so Devco terminated the purchase cell agreement. So that project is no longer moving forward. Obviously, the wellby is moving forward with applying for the 4% tax credits. However, because Maker is currently in a light tech round for Uplands, which we will also talk more about here in a few minutes. They are not able to apply for 4% tax credits until 2026, which Chaffa had, had told Maker this. And really, this is the start of why things had to be shuffled around because Maker cannot apply for tax credits in this 2025 round.
Sorry, quick background question. So do we always assign the private activity bonds to Maker?
Yeah, so not Commissioner Aricio may have a little bit more background, but in 2021, CED was given authority over the private activity bonds. We have focused mostly on affordable housing. The background before that, I don't have handy and Alicia may know a little bit more. My understanding though is we have mostly focused on affordable housing over the.
By and large, we have, yeah. And so since they're the countywide group, they're usually most shovel ready or planned out to go. But prior to that, we had had some one-off requests coming in. It used to be finance who managed this process. And this, it has gotten a lot cleaner, I would say, since the team that oversees housing has taken this on. Because every year we release the, hey, folks, let us know that you have an interest. And our previous years ago method was just accepting requests as they came.
Okay.
But by and large, it has been Maker in recent years because they're most planned out, ready to go.
So, uh, private activity bonds, can they only be used for housing? Or we just choose to use the funds?
There, there are other uses. I would say Adams County historically has used them for affordable housing. And when I was in the city of Westminster, we generally only use them for affordable housing. They are one of the most primary funding tools for multifamily affordable housing. So while they can be used for other things, there's a shortage as it is. There's never enough to go around. These are competitive rounds that take multiple, sometimes multiple years or multiple allocations to be sufficient for a project. And then sometimes a single project has to go through multiple rounds of applications to receive those funds. So while there are other uses that could, that could be applied, there are, for example, industrial development bonds, some other things. But we generally focus on affordable housing just because there is such a need for affordable housing in the community. And there's just such a shortage of, of financing tools for affordable housing.
And market has driven.
Sake of, I, I think it's still fair that the question was, yes, what else can you, broader, broader question, just for the sake of. What all are the potential uses for private activity bonds? Your answer was a hundred percent accurate with saying, well, here's what we've mostly done, but it doesn't answer the broad picture. I think it's good for everyone to know what the broad picture is.
You're asking right.
I kind of laughed a little because we couldn't give these away 10 years ago, like people, nobody wanted these. And then it's only been, it's only been over the last recent years that this has become something that people really sought as part of their capital stack.
Interesting.
Literally couldn't give them away. That's why we didn't really care. You guys figure out what to do with these.
Well, and remember, Commissioner, a lot of that had to do with the state of the economy with interest rates as well. So that really drove.
Excited to buy bonds.
And now this is helping to make it actually pencil. But the Commissioner is absolutely right. We used to sort of accept them as they came because we didn't get a whole lot of interest.
And now that. Now it became almost as competitive people asking us for other sorts of contributions. And it kind of became political. So we said, bring it back to us. Because we started getting complaints about how our staff was allocating to other folks. We were like, all right, put the burden on us to make the, the decision, we'll own the decision. And then also put a little bit more, I'm just saying, like, if we used to literally just let them kind of, we don't, you'd give them back. Yep. So there's an allocation, if you could explain that piece, I'm sure you are.
Sure. So we have these. So yes, and I, and I apologize for not going more to the background. I know the board is generally, generally aware, so, but I can, I can step back on that. So the, so first off, the private activity bond program is really a federal program. So there, there, again, it's not, so we'll, we'll see in a moment that our allocation for 2025 is roughly $7 million of private activity bonds. Now, to be clear, that's not $7 million of cash that, that the county receives to put towards affordable housing. It's bonding capacity. So these are essentially municipal tax exempt bonds. And because of the tax exempt nature, there is a value associated that compared to a kind of a premium associated compared to other debt products that don't, that are not tax exempt. And so that's where the interest rates, and I'm not a finance expert by any means, but that, that delta or that difference in the interest rates is what creates value. And so these can get, can get sold on, on third-party markets. And then that value then gets plowed into a eligible project. So there needs, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So there needs to be, so essentially the, the, the funding actually comes at the state level. The state then allocates a certain amount of funding and there's an actual formula, which I can get into if you, if you care about. But based on the formula, the county receives a certain amount and it's been trending up. So you'll see 23, we had about nine million, went to 7.3, and I think 25 was around seven and a half million, if I'm not mistaken, but we'll get there in a moment. And so the county, then we have a couple of options or eligible project, which I'll get to Commissioner Aricio's question here in a second. But then the county commissioners have the ability to allocate the PAB capacity for a specific project. Or we could actually do nothing. And if we do nothing, it automatically reverts back to Chaffa and Chaffa can then allocate. Well, goes back to the state on the, and Chaffa administers on behalf of the state. So we could do nothing. Like I said, and if we go back to the state, the state could put it towards, it could, theoretically, they could put it towards an affordable housing project in Adams County. But ultimately, we lose control. We have no control at that point of where it goes. If the county assigns it to a specific project and that project can't move forward, the project or the, I would say the issuer. So we actually assign it to an issuer that's actually going to be going through and doing the sort of the legal process to issue the bonds and to get that premium. In our case, Maker actually has the ability to be the issuer, which we'll touch on that again later in the presentation. So Maker can be the issuer. If the issuer does not file certain forms to, to roll that capacity forward, then that bonding capacity will actually go away, essentially ceases to exist each year. So they can roll it forward for up to three years. And that, and the reason I'm saying that is that's what we're having this conversation about for the 23, 24. There is a time limit and that's where we see the issuance deadline is that 2026 date. That's that three-year ability to roll those, those, that capacity forward. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Henson?
I don't want to go down to a rabbit hole, but I know that protecting, keeping these interests non-tax or tax exempt.
Municipal.
Municipal was something that they was advocating for. What, we know, do we know where that landed in HR1? I think that would. I, I think too, I think, I think, okay, I, that's right. I thought, I thought we were successful. Because that would change people's interest level quite dramatically. Yeah. So, okay, thank you. That was all. I just wanted to touch base on that.
They invest in these things too for that return.
This is one of the few, I will say, one of the few sort of, you know, programs that is actually pretty well received on, on both sides. It's, I would say it's a little bit apolitical. Generally speaking, I mean, there's always.
Right way.
Yes.
You know, the idea had been floated that they, that, oh, maybe they shouldn't remain tax exempt. And I know there was a big pushback from local government entities on that, but I was, and I thought that it succeeded, but.
Yeah. So just to clarify our process, we typically just assign these to Maker because Maker's shovel ready and has projects coming. If we have somebody else who approaches us, do we have like an open call or something where somebody else can approach us with a shovel ready?
Do I clarify this a little bit? I would say historically, we typically do assign to Maker because Maker either is the only one that's come forward with a shovel-ready project. And part of that is just their nature. They have a very robust development team. So they have a multi-year pipeline and that, and then we have commissioners on the board. We're very aware of their projects. So they're thinking about PAB capacity, two, three, sometimes even like four years in the future and kind of stacking these things up again. The reason we're talking about these kind of multi-year conversations. So I think they, they have, I'd say just a leg up from their, their capacity compared to anyone else. In instances, so we, we open it up for, to receive requests, the first of every year. We have some deadlines that we have to complete this by September of this year again, or else it would revert back to the state. Maker historically, again, has always been the one that either has, is the only one that has applied or has the most compelling project that we think is shovel-ready and ready to go. But certainly there's nothing to say that we have to give it to Maker. Today, again, I'm jumping ahead, but the 2025 allocation, we actually have three requests. One is Maker, two are a non-maker developer. However, in all three of those instances, Maker would be the issuer. So Maker is still involved no matter what. And they, in essence, are, are contract with, will be with Maker regardless, but we have the ability to then assign, hey, we're gonna give this allocation to Maker for X project.
And the reason for that, Maker becomes a special limited partner in the 4% tax credit deal.
Oh, okay.
And then the property is tax exempt, property tax exempt. So Maker typically is a 1% owner in the LLLPs, which are the ownership entities that result as a tax credit.
And they, and they have the expertise and there is a little bit of a premium that they can get from the, from going through the process and being the issuer. There is a little bit of a financial return for them.
I think we could map this pretty easily to be a nice, not, well, maybe even on the whiteboard. But I think we could map it for a reference because I know that y'all are building a really nice reference library and just having the little, and then it goes this direction, that direction, because it is a rather creative.
Yeah, it really is a decision tree because it's like we could go to Maker or another issue, or we could go to Chaffa and then Chaffa could go over here or Maker could go over here. So we could certainly do a decision tree that kind of shows the process and how it works.
Idea of a decision tree. And then, like, is this, it's, my question then is, is it open only to developers? Or is it actually also other housing authorities? So as we start HR1, what does our inventory and capacity look like? And the strategy behind that is what I'm thinking. It's like, what is the framework of strategy? I mean, I think our, you know, leadership changes, you know, with the housing cities. And so what is that? I mean, I'm hoping they're using their capacity, but sometimes they're under-resourced and they don't always see the forest through the trees.
You're, you're, that's a great question. And actually, one of our, one of our cases for 2025 or one of our, our requests for 2025 is a project that's located in Northland. And so Northland has, has allocated their PAB capacity to the project already and is requesting additional PAB capacity for the project from Adams County. So it's absolutely possible for projects to have either multi-years of say, one jurisdiction, or they could have, say, two, multiple jurisdictions, obviously housing is a regional issue. And so if say Northland didn't have a viable project and they give an ear, it might make sense for them to also say, hey, county, do you have a project? Oh, boy, sorry.
Oh, does it die?
It may have, we may have a battery issue.
There we go.
Thank you. So, so it could be that a jurisdiction perhaps doesn't have enough capacity, or sorry, does not have an eligible project. And so they may choose rather than again, to defer it back to the state. They may say, hey, rather than give to the state, I'd rather assign it to a developer that's working within a county or an adjacent jurisdiction. So that's another option as well. So we'll see one that's located in Northland. So we can allocate our, our funds to, well, both Adams County properties, but within a municipality. We could technically assign it to a project that was in Denver County if we really wanted to. That, that is an option. So there's certainly a lot of communication that goes around. We have great working relationships with, you know, BHA and Commerce City Housing Authority. And so we do have conversations about that. We always kind of look first, is there a project within the county or within the, the greater county area? Prior to going out, we've had such a demand, we've, I don't know, I'm not aware of a time that we've gone sort of outside of the county boundaries. In, in, in recent years, we'll just say.
We actually did have a fourth request for 2025 that withdrew, that was within the city of Aurora.
Take.
Okay.
Like within still Adams County or no? We, we provided private activity bonds recently to the project on 72nd Col. Not the one we toured, the one across the street that didn't get the coffee shop, which is part of why I was so pissy.
Yes.
Why I was so pissy about us not getting the coffee shop is that we gave them money from our. And that was Commerce City.
That was, I, I think just to clarify, I believe that was the land baking funding was the source of revenue. We, we may have done both. I'd have to double check that, but.
PAB as well.
Okay.
That, I believe you're correct.
It's okay. I mean.
No, no, I believe, I believe you're correct. And that was the first year that I was here. And so I'm a little bit fuzzier on that one, but, but that absolutely seems reasonable. We absolutely do that. And then we did absolutely give land baking funding as well to Commerce City.
This is all really good background. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And I don't believe I ever actually answered Commissioner Aricio's question on what are other uses?
I just sent an email to everyone. Jacey, if you look at your email, I'm sorry, I just was in a rush. The other uses that you can use them for, and it's the local guide for PABs. Eligible uses for PABs can include affordable, multifamily housing, single-family revenue bonds, mortgage credit certificates, industrial development bonds, qualified redevelopment bonds for blighted areas and solid waste disposal bonds. So like, while I, I definitely support. This also opens in the future, not to change what you guys have now, but if we're talking about doing some of the asset enhancement stuff that Matt's team's looking at, we could find out if there's an opportunity to carve out a little bit of this stuff to help bolster that program because it includes single-family mortgage revenue bonds and mortgage credit certificates that might be used to help some of these, these homebuyers that are, that we want to help get access to actual homeownership. So I don't want to gum up the works here, but it is something that we can, we can maybe kind of say, oh, well, since we have this other program, the asset program that Matt's team is working on, it might, this might be a tool to help because it's really hard to find other tools to, in those areas. For those types of uses. So we could look at that. I sent you the email. And I just wanted to clarify, and I, again, I'm, I, I try to look at like, when you do the capital stack of some of these programs, you've got your building and you've got, obviously it costs a lot. I think what's kind of confusing, if somebody's listening, you may have private activity bonds cover a certain amount of that whole capital stack. And again, it's debt, but you may have PABs. And when we say that it's a municipal bond, it means that the investors don't have to pay cap, taxes on that investment. Okay. Cause it's a municipal bond. That's separate than the 1% ownership that the housing authority, the housing authority can do, which is by giving that 1%, having 1% ownership, they become like this whole project now becomes like a government project and they don't have to pay property taxes. And so it is kind of odd.
Things that you put out to end up being a lot more attractive on the market either more of a stable investment.
It's stable, it's backed, and it's also tax-free. So when we talk about it, there was, it can kind of be confusing to people that are like listening, like, wait, wait, tax-free what? Tax-free what? And they're two different things. What's interesting is I, it was really, I was like, oh, it was an interesting moment when I learned that a housing authority could literally take like a fractional ownership, even less than 1%. Just by touching it and saying they own a little bit of it, now the whole project is free from property taxes. Is that interesting?
Yeah.
But it gives a lot of leverage and power to the housing authority to work out a deal and say, let us have this 1%. They may save on this project hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, over times. And then Peter can work out a deal to say, give me a cut of that, right? Or to help us with some of the other stuff they work on.
And it also raises the anticipation of keeping it permanently affordable. Since they're in it a little, as it might come up for redevelopment one day or.
Now it's right of first refusal. Even more so.
Not into their contracts now too.
Yeah. Most of them already have some sort of right of first refusal.
Smart, frankly.
Already, but the law actually strengthens it. So that's why Peter and us have such a great relationship is because we give him a lot of leverage and a lot of support. Not everyone in the housing authority gets that kind of support, but we trust it and we know he does good work. But I mean, he's like, he has a whole set of tools that we give him a lot of, of support. It's because our board is usually so good at trying to support housing.
And it pays off in our future because we maintain a infrastructure of permanent affordability for that housing.
I just wanted to show you kind of the big picture because a lot of people understand when you say tax-free, tax-free, like, what are you talking about? These are just two of the tools that we, and, and again, we, we do support, like, we give a lot of, and the fact is then also separate from him being a potential deciding, we could allocate and defer the allocation task to Peter. But he could also be an issuer. Those are two different roles. You can do the, or today we're talking about allocation. We're wearing the allocation hat, the allocator hat. He's also doing the issuer. So even when they said, we're not deferring to them to do the allocation, he can still be the issuer that issues. And I think, and so that's just another tool. So this is, just shows how good a relationship we've been working on with our housing authority over the years.
Nice. Okay. Helpful. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. We'll continue moving forward with the slides.
So we touched on this a little bit, but just as a refresher, because there's that time limit with the 2023 PAB allocation, Maker has requested an amendment to the contract or the assignment contract to allow for more flexibility within the assignment. And so going back a little bit, the 2023 contract essentially said that it must be used, the allocation must be used for overlook at Thornton. Now we've leaned to the county attorney's office to say, is there any flexibility within this agreement? No, we need to come back to the board to essentially assign, reassign the remaining 2023 PAB allocation. So what Maker is looking for is more flexibility because of the fluid nature of these, these tools in the toolbox. We need some flexibility. So additionally, 2024 assignment, they're looking to amend the contract because the Devco development is no longer moving forward to allow for more flexibility to either Uplands or another county-approved project. Because of, there's so many requests at this point, we're looking for as much flexibility as possible because these financing tools aren't set in stone yet until the 4% tax credit is awarded. We worked with Maker to develop some sort of option that would allow as much flexibility as possible. So Chase, oh, I'm on Uplands. I don't know if the board is familiar with Uplands. We awarded Adams County Home Funds to this project in 2024. It is a development that it's a, is part of a larger development, the Uplands redevelopment project in Westminster. It's located off of 88th and Decatur. It is the head start location you may be familiar with. Be 70 units, 10 of the units will be for adults with developmental disabilities.
Okay. So again, as Melissa already said, so really what Maker is asking to do is, is to increase their flexibility. And in particular for 20, the 2023 award, the, the clock is ticking and they will have to do something, but, but prior to December 31st of 2026. So what, kind of in summary, what Maker's request is, is to allow them to reassign those, the, the, the remaining portion of the 2023 award to the Uplands project, which again, was the, was, is already, has a partial, partial award to, to that project or other Adams County-approved PAB projects. This is where I think the board has some discretion. You could certainly today decide that you would like to say, yes, we will take this 2023 remaining amount and we want to put it to just Uplands. And we can certainly craft that in our language with Maker. Or the board could decide to say, we would love to see this money go to Uplands, but also knowing that we could be in a similar situation where maybe it's a, they only need one and a half years. Maybe there's additional funding without having to come back to the board. Maker would have the ability to, to apply those funds to another project that the county has approved. So say, you know, a million dollars of PAB capacity could then be applied to the wellby or other project that the board has, has issued. So again, we can talk about this now. We can talk about the 2024 request. It may make sense to do 23 and 24 together and then we'll, we'll, we'll kind of close that a little bit and then we'll move on to 2025, if that's all right. So again, 2024, as, as, as Melissa already mentioned, this was already kind of allocated to, again, we already, we're, we're kind of moving in a transition of increasing flexibility, kind of bite size at a time. So we already again saw that there is a need to be flexible. So we had allowed allocated for two potential projects, which is great because one already has gone away. So the remaining one is the wellby. Again, like we've seen, you know, a lot of times two years or more than one year is needed for a project the size of the wellby, but is it exactly two years? Maybe not. It may be one and a half years. And so again, 2024 has an extra year of, of capacity, so it wouldn't be expiring until 12/31 of '27. But again, Maker is just asking for the more flexibility to where if there is additional funds that are currently assigned to the wellby, if those are, are, are not needed for the wellby, could they, perhaps there's more that is needed for Uplands. Could they carve off, you know, a million dollars of capacity and put it towards Uplands? Again, I think the board absolutely has the discretion to say, you know, do we want it to first of the wellby? Or do we want to just say, hey, as long as it's going to the wellby, Uplands or another project that we're okay with, we'll defer to Maker to sort of call it rank and prioritize as, as they see fit based on markets, based on, you know, market demand for the PAB capacity. So that's where we'll pause for a moment and just discuss this, this, this topic of flexibility and then we'll move on to 2025.
Um, Adams County-approved PAB projects, is there a list?
There's not. So right now what that list would be, would be, the wellby was already pre-approved, was already approved and Uplands was approved. And then we have three, well, the wellby.
Was not approved. It's not been, we don't have PAB to Uplands. That would be a new project that we would add to the list if we, we could.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. And then you have two more.
And then we had two, two more that are part of the 25. And that was why I said we may go back. But yeah, presumably it could be the wellby, Uplands and potentially two additional projects that you'll hear later today.
I'm not seeing why we wouldn't do this. Any thoughts?
No, I mean, it does, it does make a lot of sense. I was curious too, what other projects we could direct this to. I mean, it does give them, it gives them a sizable amount of activity of bonds, you know, to really, to be pretty flexible with. But we definitely want these, both of these projects to come to fruition, for sure, well, be in Uplands.
So for me, I said, I don't want to gum up the works with talking about other uses, but it, what we don't have is specific, specific thing. Like if Peter came in and says, we have a specific gap to fill in a million or $2 million for this project. I could say, don't, don't slow down. Let's give it to them today. With the fact that this is still fairly nebulous. I would say, why don't we have a conversation with Matt Rivera and his team and just say, hey, just out of curiosity, before we put a stamp on this and close like three years of PABs on a potential opportunity, could this be used as a potential to bolster his new, because that asset program is brand new. Really hard to get something like that set up, really hard to find resources. And I would just hate to, to, to have a, and I, and again, I would support normally of us doing that if there was this very specific. But could we come back in a couple of weeks and say, hey, of those other potential uses, we feel like they're, they're not viable, they're not gonna be helpful. So let's just give them to Peter, you know, and, and Maker. Or maybe you come back and say, hey, can you carve out 500,000 or, you know, to help us with one of our other strategic programs that we're trying to support?
I haven't talked yet. So I'm gonna hop in here real quick. I'm fine with both staff recommendations. I think where I. Where I understand is that this would be to Maker. Both of these would go to Maker, the twenty-three and the twenty-four, and then it's the or statement. Or other Adams County approved P A B projects and. I think with the change in H R one and what our future looks like, and absent a list of P A B projects. That it comes back to the board if it's reassigned. I mean, I think that. That those are like, I think that there's an opportunity. We don't get regular updates from. The representative, the commissioner representative from any of our boards, Maker Board, A C Rep Board, you know, Dr. Cog Board. Um and so.
I haven't been to either one of those meetings and they haven't happened.
Well, I I know, but I think if you see regular commissioner updates of what's happening on your board. I would feel more confident in just saying, yeah, I give this all to Maker Housing, but I think it's our one tie. And I think it's important for this board to all, to also look at where we are at currently and where we at in the future. And we do have the runway of, you know, December of twenty twenty-six, we have a runway of December of twenty twenty-seven. To get these. Yeah. I Kathy and then back.
Well, yeah, I I like I. I don't mind coming back to the board, but I also would like to explore what other option opportunities we can use because again, this the. There's not a defined dollar amount and looking at how much money is of the cap they didn't use. For the overlook, um you know, and maybe that's unique, maybe that's not gonna happen that often, but it did happen. And so um. Maybe uh. May, I think we should look at what what uh how else we can flex these, flex these dollars. And also, and like like Lynn was saying, that it should come back at, if we put it towards um wellby, the wellby. And Uplands and also possibly a third, you know, then and some another program that we learn about that we we can do and maybe we would designate that. Rather than just leaving all of that money out there, not knowing how much is actually really gonna be used. Makes me, you know, I want to be smart with our money. I want to make it work for us.
And maybe just provide a little bit more context and then Melissa could provide some additional information, particularly for the Uplands around why they're asking for. Uh so so I should also say Westminster is providing their pri- uh P A B capacity to the Uplands instead of this is in addition to Westminster's allocation. Um and I know you had some information.
For the overlook Thornton, we did not, we allocated our P A B.
Yeah. And sometimes that's part of what happens is, you know, early on the process, it's kind of, we're gonna go out to two or three. Groups, we're not sure if we're gonna get Thornton's, we're not gonna sure if we're gonna get Adams County, then all of a sudden you get everything and more that you that you wished for and. Um and then there's there's excess for sure.
Enthusiasm for that project. That's how it's done.
For Uplands, uh Maker did indicate there's a three million dollar gap. And the reason for that is is tying to the infrastructure cost to head start. And I'm not super familiar, I look at Alicia for more, if you know more on this, but.
Not yet, no.
There's uh the cost associated with the head start location. Secondly.
The infrastructure cost escalation, but you can find that one.
Yeah. And just another point of clarification, with twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, we have already told the state we are assigning to Maker. So the the request is a project change request rather than. Reassigning to a different organization.
We're not able to reassign.
I don't know.
I, well, so we've already assigned them to Maker. I, again, I would look for probably some legal legal help. Um but I would believe that because we've already assigned them to Maker, the really the two options are Maker could potentially assign them somewhere else. Or it would go away at the end of the expiration, i- if it can't carry forward.
So we assign them to an entity with an earmark and what we're doing is removing and providing flexibility in the earmark, but not asking to change the recipient.
Right.
And and if that comes up the works, then I will withdraw my my request, but also ask at twenty twenty-five, maybe we at least consider. Talking to Matt. I just sent to team uh what the asset development program was uh from Noel. So just as background.
And and I would agree with that. If we have a little more flexibility to twenty-five compared to twenty-three and twenty-four.
Yeah, that's helpful. My final question is, okay, so if we can't change the assignee. Can Maker help us in asset development programs as they're helping? Like, it seems like they. Have their fingers in all of these projects essentially. Can they help us with this program too?
I mean, it's really a conversation for Peter and and Matt. It's my understanding, I mean, housing authorities do participate in that function. Our housing authority is really. Like all-star focused on these big sexy projects and not always on these other things, but they do, they do, uh they do manage the. Vouchers and other things, so we could find out if they have either already. Uh something dedicated to the asset development piece of it, or a desire or a willingness to work with Matt. That might still work out.
I think it's also a conversation of like, hey, the board would also like to see you working with Matt.
Yeah.
And so can you work with us? Cause we.
Maybe they are, maybe they are.
And so, I don't know, I think that that's a more conversation too.
Yeah, just for clarification, Maker, we directed, we all directed them that that's a project you want them to explore, that that would be. Direction that they would need to work with, right? I mean, it's not, it's not just up to them if they have that conversation.
Oh, okay. Adams County approved.
I'm just.
You're you are correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we're good with this recommendation then to allow Maker to have more flexibility in this. It sounds like we also want to have a conversation with Maker about. Other ways we might be able to leverage their support in some other projects. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yep.
If I could just say back, say back what I'm hearing for twenty-three and twenty-four, just to clarify. So what I'm hearing is that the board is comfortable with. Uh broadening the 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 existing assignment uh for twenty-three and twenty-four to include Uplands. Uplands or wellby.
Wellby.
Um or other projects which we haven't gotten to yet, so we'll just, we'll kind of pause it there. I just want to make sure I've heard that correctly and then we'll talk through twenty twenty-five, which may have slight difference. Okay. Thank you.
Wow. Jumping into twenty twenty-five. Chase's point about the allocations increase over time, as you could see, now our allocation for twenty-five is seven point six million. The assignment deadline, so assigning to an entity um is by September thirtieth of this year. So we have a little bit of time, but. Not a lot. Um the issuance deadline, so actually issuing those bonds is December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. We received, as I indicated verbally, we had four LOIs, however, the fourth one did rescind its request. Um these LOIs are in order in which we receive them. Um the first one is Squire Village in Northland. It is a section eight property that is rehabbing. We'll get into a little bit more details on. On the demographics of the property. The wellby, obviously new construction with an unincorporated Adams County and Dawson Square. Which is also a section eight property, uh both Squire Village and Dawson Square are owned by Related Affordable. And this uh Dawson Square is also located in unincorporated Adams County, will be a rehab project. Of course, to make things more complicated for everybody, all the projects requested the full P A B amount. So in order to try to help um facilitate conversation and help all the projects in one way or another. Uh we're, we did work with Maker and and trying to come up with a solution for that. So we'll, we'll talk more about that in the recommendation slide. Squire Village, as I said, is owned by Related Affordable. It is a section eight property built in nineteen eighty-two. It's senior. Uh facility, so fifty-one units for seniors at or below sixty percent A M I. It's located off about one hundred and twelfth and Grant Street. City of Northland has already confirmed to assign its twenty twenty-five P A B to this project. Improvements are his um comprehensive renovation project uh for the entire property, both internally and externally. The boyers, I don't know if we need to go into significant uh detail here. Uh as the board approved yesterday through the land use case, one hundred and seventeen units um serving. Residents thirty percent to seventy percent A M I. I also indicated verbally that the um project won't be applying for four percent Y tech until twenty twenty-six. Because Chaffa has said, don't apply until you have Uplands completed. Um this was also part of the land banking program in twenty twenty-three with ARPA funds. And the third request, Dawson Square, built in nineteen eighty-two as well. This project is located off of approximately eighty-eighth and Washington behind the Walmart. I don't know if you all are familiar with that area, but that's where it's located. Thirty-six units serving residents at or below sixty percent A M I. Again, section eight property, so um. The way that these are are funded is actually through HUD. There's a direct payment through HUD for the tenants living there. And typically, there's not enough cash flow for renovations on section eight properties. So they're doing a refinance bundle on both Squire Village and. Dawson Square to accommodate all of the renovations that are needed at these properties to keep them affordable for in perpetuity essentially. So how do we, how do we handle this, right? How do we handle all of the requests? Uh we have a couple of different options. The board can choose to pick one project in particular, Squire Village, wellby or Dawson Square. Or we can divide up and allow flexibility um for Maker to issue. Because of, and I I'm saying Maker is the issuer, and that's because historically the county has not issued the bonds, and I don't know if Alicia can give. Any references to why that happened, but that's been.
He probably knows that better than me because that's been the case since. I'm in Memorial, but it is an administrative issue.
My what?
We typically don't issue the bonds. The county typically does not issue the bonds. So we have always brought recommendations to have Maker as the issuer, assigned to Maker. Maker issues the bonds now.
I agree with you there, son.
It's possible for the county to issue, but that's just not something we've taken on. I don't know that I'd either recommend that.
I just walked in.
Why don't we issue our own P A Bs, our own bonds? Are we allowed to? I don't know. I have to.
My understanding is it's just a, it's a skills gap. Um and 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 when I was in Westminster, we did, we did the same. Westminster was allowed to do it. We never did. We. We always assigned to Chaffa who admit, who issued on our behalf.
No, sorry, I don't know. I I mean, we can look into.
I think the the idea that it might be scared or speculating until we get a solid answer, but like it makes sense that he's that. Housing Authority is already dealing capital stack. You know, somebody else is already dealing with the capital stack on their project, like a Westminster project. Give it to them and not add another player. Party, I should say, add another party to a project if you don't need to.
And to your point, Commissioner Arisio, Maker would be a special limited partner as part of both Squire Village and Dawson Square because of the property tax exemption. So um. Staff recommendation, we would recommend that we apply the P A B, the twenty twenty-five P A B to the wellby. Um which would be hitting our proposition one, two, three goal as well. Squire Village and Dawson Square are already counting in that prop one, two, three goal. So um the new construction is. Obviously more attractive when it comes to the prop one, two, three goal. Is there anything else?
No, and I I think just to kind of clarify, um while we hit, we did lay out two potential options, a third potential option is what we're hearing today. Um could be to honestly is if if the board would like to pause for a few weeks, we have, we have a tight timeline. Um while while there is the ability to roll this forward for three years, we do have to issue it by September and then that issuer. Uh or so we have to sign by September and then that that assignee would be the one that would roll it forward for up to three years. Um but we do have a few weeks that if the board would like us to look into conversations with Matt and Peter. Um on the uh asset uh asset development side of things and see if maybe there's a potential. Partial carve out, so of the seven, I'm just making up a number, but just say a million of that capacity or whatever seems to be the appropriate number. We could certainly explore that for a few weeks um and then come back to the board um to see if that's something that the board would like. Um or the board could assign the entirety to one of the three. Or assign the entirety to Maker to allow them to determine how much goes to each project, or we could do, you know, straight thirds to each one. I I hate to be so nebulous. There are, those are all options on the table.
It's a quick kind of clarifying question on the process. If we wanted that conversation to happen with Matt and team, do they need to submit an application? Project or we we just kind of do that behind the scenes? Yes, I wonder if there's value in having them actually submit that project request to them.
I it it, I mean, our our submittal is essentially an email with a letter of, letter of intent uh for the project. Just in the interest of time, I would probably just. Walk straight to Matt's affi- office and and have a sit down with him and just talk through his thoughts as and as well. It's really, I think, just seeing is there. Do we have enough time to come up with a feasible amount? Is is it feasible, you know, in the next month to sort of come up with a program? Um if not, and I'm not saying it's not, but certainly I I hear what the board is saying about looking into it for twenty twenty-six. Um but we can certainly take a few weeks to look into the matter.
And then January one, the next round.
We would, yeah, sure. Yeah, we would open up in in January and then we 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 get our word early in January and then we would start in twenty twenty-six. So we we could pick this up in six months.
Concept maybe possible.
Do a quick time check. It's nine fifty and we do have um one other presentation. We're about twenty minutes behind and then go ahead. Yeah, so I actually agree with the bring back after we have some internal conversations with Matt's team. Another bring back that I'm gonna need from you guys is, so we just approved twenty-three and twenty-four roll forward. I'm trying to do the math here, right? Like, how much money is already going to wellby? How much is their gap? How much is the gap for each of these projects? Like, I wanna make sure that the numbers make sense. Right? And I'm, so from twenty twenty-three to twenty-four, I'm. Calculating that we have about eight million that could potentially go to wellbe today because the gap for Uplands is only three million.
So it's not one for one, unfortunately, dollar for dollar. I wish I knew more about how this happens, but I do know that it's not one for one. So the bond. Dollar amount is not worth one dollar when you give it to a project because.
It's basically the premium, um because if if you could issue debt for seven million dollars at five percent and someone else could issue issue. Um well, at five percent, but has no tax uh or has better tax implications, someone would be willing to pay. A premium up to almost that amount, and that's where based on how competitive the market is, but so there's essentially a premium value. So that's, that's the amount that's really the value that's going into the project. And again, I I would hate to speculate, but it's a, it is a. Significantly less amount than the face value of what that bonding capacity is. So it's not seven million into the project. It could be. You know, I I don't even want to speculate on a number, but it's a much lesser number that is, again, it's the premium value after it's gone through this sort of. See, financial engineering, but this financial process to identify the value created uh because of the tax incentives.
Right, the tax savings is really the piece.
And that's where like so.
Send to your staff.
Exactly. So tax code and interest rates and premiums, those are all move, and that's again, why there's flexibility. All those things are happening outside of the control of the housing authority or whoever the issuer is. And then it, nothing gets locked in until those those numbers are issued. So it's very hard for them to say, how much. P A B capacity do I really need for any given project? Because until I go and actually issue, I, as as the issuer, I have no idea or an I. The issuer would have no idea what is that value that's being created? That is really the the sort of the cash that is actually going into the capital stack that Commissioner Arisio presented.
And it goes into your full-on repayment. So then you're repaying on all your construction loans, on all, everything. And then this is just one other layer. It's kind of like if you were to get a remodeling loan at the same time you're buying a mortgage. And you don't know yet when both are sold and you have interest rates attached to both and you know what your final payment is, that's when you know.
Exactly. And I will say for the wellby, this early on, having just gotten land use approvals yesterday, there is no construction drawing. So as far as, you know, they could speculate at a very, very high level. Is it a? Eighty million dollar project or a ninety million dollar project or a seventy million dollar project? They really, they're not gonna have a detailed. Performance to tell you exactly what their gap is. They're still in the early phases. This is one of the early funding mechanisms that are better, better. Sought.
Okay.
Kathy and then Steve.
Thank you. Just quickly, I'd like to flag that, did you, I have a question. I want to confirm, did you say that Northland has assigned their P A B to Squire Village?
Yes.
Okay, so my concern is Dawson Square as they are an unincorporated and I don't know that they have another jurisdiction to appeal to. To uh achieve their goal of renovation. So um and upgrades and and nineteen eighty-two, uh we also know another ostriches building. Uh Adams County that was built around that time, is in dire need of some big up updates. So I would like to flag that, that I uh would like to know what we can do. For Dawson Square. Since they are in our unincorporated area.
Steve, I agree.
I feel like I I want to bring up like also, um. I'm okay with allocating because because we have a partner here in Maker, but I also want to think like in the situation that we had at Seventy Second and Colorado. We didn't get the coffee shop that we asked for and we kept giving more and more and more to that project, asking for the coffee shop and all that. Now, I can't blame. The builder, because you can't force a business to open. I get that.
Yeah.
But there are still, like, if we in the future have, in this case, I'm not saying we have any specific ideas, but if we. I have some specific requests that we want to attach as expectations, maybe not full-on conditions, but. That we have somebody own that and follow up and assign that to a responsible party within our team to say. Their job is to make sure that those expectations uh are fulfilled. Because in the situation that happened here, the answer was, who do I talk to? Who on your team was supposed to follow up? And nobody did. And shame on us for not assigning to somebody, but we have that problem a lot in the organization right now. We're gonna work on that together. So I just want to note that if in the future, I don't know, like, if we need to. If we do have a situation, it's gonna be after I'm gone probably, where you guys have some P A B allocations where you could say there's an expectation that we also assign some expectation. Maybe twenty-five it is, getting Peter and 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 Rivera together, who know, uh you know, but I just want you guys to keep in mind that you don't just have to. Blank check hand these. But I just want you guys to keep in mind that you don't just have to blank check hand these out. I think if you say there's some sort of expectations associated with it, I think Dion even said that, like, kind of hitting like. You guys get that, kind of like, since you're the ones doing this, you guys get to kind of ask and set the tone of what you would like to see.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to the screens really quick. So. Nothing against Peter. I think he's brilliant. And I know this is a staff recommendation. I don't have an issue going after new and putting new projects and funding to new projects. I do have a soft spot in my heart for those projects that, you know, those are forty year old dwellings now. And especially the one in unincorporated Adams is that we're there on the safety net. There is no other city that's gonna come in. So is there flexibility in the twenty three, twenty four? If we allocate a full amount to one project. Is there flexibility to remodel these other two for one? Northland's gonna come with a commitment projects. Does that make sense?
I do. So, so.
So that Julie was talking about. And I understand it's not a one to one.
Yeah, totally understand. So let's see, twenty twenty four. The, let's see, that was going, that the, I was originally going to the Welby and then there was four point eight million that is left, we'll call it to play with, if you will, for twenty twenty three. Again, they ask was for twenty twenty three to go to P A B to go to Uplands. Twenty twenty four is theoretically already assigned to the Wel, to, to the Welby. I think we would, I mean. It's not that we couldn't ask Peter or Maker if that twenty twenty four award could be shifted to Dawson. I think we can. We just, I don't believe we have any control because we've already assigned it out. So it's no longer sort of in our bucket. Whereas twenty twenty five, we have an assignment. We have the ability to say this money is used for X. But it's something we could certainly talk to Peter about. Is there an appetite or do they have the ability to shift some of that twenty twenty four? Or twenty twenty three award to Dawson? If that makes sense.
I don't know if timing will work on Dawson though, because they've.
That's where we needed.
Right. So. Right. They have to build their capital stack for Dawson Square as well. So timing might not be great for Dawson Square for twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four. So possibly. What I would recommend is we kind of keep that flexibility for Maker on twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Either Uplands, the Welby, or we could even open it up as any other affordable. Project within unincorporated Adams County. To keep it a little bit more.
Or to say twenty twenty three, twenty four could go to Uplands, Welby, or Dawson.
Or Dawson, yeah.
See your hand, Julie. Thank you for that. I guess my, if the board decides and it's a board decision, we need to hear some other, from other board members. And Emma's not here. If it does go to new, a new project, then I do want a plan. I mean, Northland is a safety net. They do need assistance. They applied for assistance. The unincorporated. We do need a plan for that. So whether we, maybe HUD has some resources. I feel like if we pass on the P A B, what is HUD? What can we do with HUD in order to make those improvements? Because we're talking, my house is twenty years old and I'm going through all of the, I did the air conditioning and I did a roof. And now the gutters and now the paint and. Where are we at with HUD and can we partner to, if we don't, if none of the money today gets allocated to those projects, I'd like to see a plan.
I think that's probably a good point to make in, do we anticipate any impacts from? Bill, whatever we're calling it, either. And then it occurs to me too, that y'all are not up to speed on most of these projects. So wouldn't it make sense for us to ask Maker to come and update the board generally on what's in the pipeline? So as they're coming before you, there's more familiarity on the timing and the need. And what other resources are available? We could certainly make that a risk as well.
I'm hearing that there might be, and tell me if I'm wrong, guys, a consensus from this board of trying to support. All three projects potentially at some level? Is that something that you guys could come back with this on? Like, instead of just saying, hey, Maker, like, here's all of this money and you decide where it goes. Can we put a little more guardrail on how that twenty twenty five distribution looks like based off of? Recommendations from you guys? Can you guys come back with that?
I would say ye- yes and no. So yes, we absolutely can. We, we could assign it to Maker and say, Maker, it's gonna. Again, for this specific, or this dollar amount for this project, or these dollar amounts for these two projects or these three projects. I think at the end of the day, what Maker will ultimately be able to do is still undeterminable. There will need to be additional funding. There will need to be the, this, this other process about whether or not the, the. The award will even happen. And so I, I think there's still a lot of unknown as far as where will the funding ultimately end up? Even if we give the ability to Maker to move forward with one or all three of these projects. The only other piece which I, there's a lot of conversation going on, is into your point about that Dawson Square doesn't have another option, say, in a non municipality. As far as I know, there's nothing to stop, say, Squire Village from going and getting Northland's twenty twenty six P A B award. I mean, it's in the future. Who knows if Northland has another project they're thinking about it, but they obviously twenty twenty five from Northland is not sufficient. They could couple, you know, it's not uncommon, again, Welby is one example of putting multiple years from the same municipality. So that could, so, so Squire Village could have another avenue in, in Northland's twenty six award, potentially. There's a lot of unknowns.
We could also do a prioritization of projects, right? So rather than assigning specific amounts because there's so many market drivers behind it, maybe the board determines. Priority one is Dawson Square because there's not other options, right? And we've already assigned to the Welby. Steve?
I think Peter always would welcome opportunity to come in and talk about the projects.
It's true.
It also shows, and then I think it's okay to ask for each of these projects, not just, here's what we're doing, but like actually show a capital stack and explain it. I think the more we understand the finances of these deals, the more empowered we are to make better decisions. And strategic decisions. And then in that meeting, we can say to Peter, by the way, it's my understanding, because that meeting would happen like a month, two weeks. Tell us timing, but he could come back and have a conversation between now and that moment. Rivera and him could talk, you know, we could have Matt and Peter chat and see if there's other things. Then they may come in and say, here's what we worked on. It would be nice for them to do it together and. And just, you know, we get an overall update. I, I like it. I, I'm just saying that there's also a benefit. That this board, when they do these allocations, also feel that they're empowering and they're part of the solution because in some way you are. And it was a little frustrating to know that the, the opening of the Seventy Second of Colorado was done, not the one that you guys went to, the other one across the street. We weren't even invited until like the last minute, they get an invitation and we were significant contributors to that project. Now, I do think that the builder's willing to do, he is willing to do a. The developer is willing to do a tour for us, but. I just think it's important that you guys in the future get credit for these investments because you could be putting them somewhere else.
Okay, so where are you at?
I support coming back, Peter, and but if, in that, is that what?
Three and twenty twenty four as recommended by staff. And we're talking about twenty twenty five dollars. Yes. And so that, and we're asking for a bring back on that so we can talk about how we want to leverage the P A B, the twenty twenty five P A B.
And support these three projects.
Would the board like to have Related Affordable present at the same time? Because their, their capital stack is gonna be super unique with Dawson Square because of the section eight. They own Dawson Square.
They own Dawson Square.
Alright, oh, there you go. I see it. Thank you.
So much cheaper to retain.
Yeah, I think they should come. Yes, if they're asked, yes, let's, let's, let's have a relationship with them, have them come.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And just to clarify, the twenty three, twenty four, so that would be to assign or to allow Maker to reallocate the twenty three and twenty four awards. To the Welby, to Uplands.
I'm okay with the flexibility.
And Squire Village and Dawson Square. Are we okay with all four of those? Or do we want to hold off?
Do Dawson Square are gonna be, if they're, if they're asking for twenty twenty five dollars, they're not at a point, they're not ready to pull the trigger.
And so we'll, we'll, we'll limit it to just Uplands and the Welby. I just want to be, be clear.
I don't, you guys tell us, could they use the money if they were ready? I don't know.
Twenty four, maybe twenty three, probably not, just from a timing component.
I'm okay with the flexibility at this point because we've already allocated to the entity. And if they say, hey, we need to move some things around, they can make it work. I'd rather give that flexibility now than to come back and give.
Yeah, I guess the flexibility is not gonna hurt anything. They, they're probably not gonna be ready.
So we'll, we'll go with max flexibility for twenty three, twenty four.
That's right.
And then for twenty five, we'll come back with the board. We'll do some digging. We'll meet with Matt, let me with Peter prep them. We'll plan on bringing Peter and Maker back. As well as representatives from Related Affordable. Definitely hearing that the board would like to see more information related to the capital stack and just overall project financials and scope of the project and how this would fit. Is there anything else that you think would be helpful to make your decision so we can have as much information for you as possible when we come back?
Multiple options for recommendations from you guys would be great.
I would just amend that a little bit and prioritize the options that are available. I know our board, we're chatty. Um, have Peter come in for an update? I think that housing's gonna be top of mind for the board if we can just schedule something more regular.
Yeah. Oh, outside of this, just a regular, regular recurring.
More touch points with Peter and Baker. And our staff.
Quarterly, do you think, or?
Your cadence right now, um, I think with the changes, no, because I think as need arises.
Understood. Okay. I think we have enough for, for now to go from that, to start working on that. And we'll work with Dion and the rest of the team to find the right time, but we'll plan on scheduling that when we talk to Peter and the related team. Thank you very much. Take care.
Listen to break and stop steps.
All right, Brian.
All right.
What you got?
So thank you all for having us in today to talk about the Pico Street Improvements Project. We're presenting on change order six to the project. Then do some slides. So uh, this is a context map for the project. The corridor is from West Fifty Second Avenue, which is county line with City and County of Denver. Up to uh about fifty eighth Avenue. Um, this abuts against a viaduct project that the county undertook about ten years ago. Uh, Kristen Sullivan, our deputy county manager was was uh. Uh, waxing nostalgic about that project and its complexities not too long ago. Um, and uh, I'm I'm trying to cheat there, it was, it was a very challenging prod- project and it was wrapping up about the time that I joined the county. Uh, our C I P manager, uh Renee Valdez was was a participant on that project and can probably have some more stories to share. Um, so today is to provide a, an informational update on the project in general and then per uh to solicit preliminary approval for change order six. To our agreement with Hammond Infrastructure Inc. to cover the remaining overhead costs on uh the projects due largely to utility delays. Uh, so the project uh is intended to widen the corridor to two lanes in each direction with curb gutter and sidewalk. Uh, we're uh repairing, replacing deteriorated pavement uh along the corridor, upgrading uh drainage systems. Uh, replacing aging utilities which were uh in much need of attention. Adding signals are at fifty second and fifty fifty fifth Avenue and installing safety medians along the corridor. Uh, there's also uh public art and decorative crosswalk uh component to the, to the project.
Is there anything, but we probably don't, like sometime, you know, cities always say, you know, when you cross into the municipality, they're usually, they're something, do we do that? Or is there, there's gonna, you said there's gonna be artwork items, I mean, I don't know if that's anything, I'm just interested and I'm just curious.
Uh, so we, we do like to do place making uh as part of our projects. Can you speak a little bit, Steve, to uh the, what the, the public art will play specifically?
Um, I believe that the art would be taking place majority in the medians. Uh, I believe that they're kind of creating an entry into the county by just upgrading the medians. I think it's, we don't typically put landscaping there, so um you'll probably see something similar is what's going in with New York, we're going to see rock based stuff. Now, the crosswalks, those are going to be painted crosswalks, uh similar to what we can see at the Roundabout over off of one hundred and twenty fourth over, over by the fairgrounds.
Okay.
Uh, so it's a brick patterned crosswalk, it's long lasting, it's just kind of the way that Posco was presenting it at the entrance of leaving Denver and coming in.
Trying to market as, as a space or in like, you're, you know, you're coming into a new.
Correct.
Okay. Steve?
So. We, when, when we do art for the facilities, we've done by, we have a commission. So there's two arts commissions, right? There's one that does the allocation of the tier three allocations and then there's a different one that does selection of the art.
Right.
Is that committee the one who's doing the selection of the art for your project? Uh, so that's the group that's still looking at it, right? They're the ones who make the selection.
Cultural Arts is uh overseeing all of the artistic elements of this project.
Yeah, I just wanted to make it wasn't a administrative decision, it's a decision that's actually being made by the team that we, because if not, bring it back to us and let us choose. But I think that we've in the past identified letting folks.
If cultural arts is doing it, I think.
Yeah, and it is confusing though for new people to realize that we have two different commissions, the Cultural Arts Commission versus the S C F D, I don't even know the names.
Well, and they work to make it um area relevant.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah, to that neighborhood.
Past, we had. A product and an intention to do monument signs for each different neighborhood, not to be used on the art funds. We might need to resurrect that link.
Okay, good, thanks, picture flagging.
And I realized uh I didn't make introduction Steve Green for, for posterity and the record is our infrastructure and stormwater manager in Public Works.
Steve Warren, Steve Warren Green.
Go Steve. Steve, making it easy for us. There you go. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, oh, that was my question, thank you.
So today's topic of concern is change order six. Uh, this is the change order history for the project. Uh, change order one was for one point one million dollars. Uh, I introduced or the necessity was introduced by City and County of Denver for uh. Uh, signal design changes, uh, uh, light breaking signal design changes on the project. That was approved in February of last year. All other change orders on this project were administrative change orders introduced in the intervening months. And then today's change order that we're seeking preliminary approval on is for six hundred and forty thousand dollars. In context of the overall cost of this project.
Wait, can we go back?
Which utility?
Utility delays. Which we're.
Provider.
Yeah, could we, I mean, can you give us a little, are you already going?
Future slide that's gonna go deep on.
Thank you, thank you so much.
With utilities and exactly how much from each utility. Um, so overall cost of the project, original contract value was nine point nine six million dollars. Uh, addition of one point one million from City and County of Denver's uh design changes. Uh, and then today's addition proposes uh six hundred and forty thousand dollars related to costs uh in utility delays. Bringing uh overall contract value to eleven point seven million. And then this is uh the uh specifics and number of working days related to each utility. I realized belatedly after I submitted the presentation that I did not sum up the Excel energy delays. These are on different components of uh Excel energy utilities that sum up to two hundred and thirty eight days total. So they're our winner, unfortunately. Um, and there's also when we overlay all of these delays into a Gantt chart for the project. Uh, they sum up to uh uh three hundred and twenty two days total in delays on the project. Um, so they're not successive delays by, the total delay to the project was nearly a year in delays related to all of the utilities combined.
I have a quick question, um. You know, I'd the, I was fortunate to work with uh many of us, I think all of us probably, um, with Karen Stewart. And she was in the transportation space and Karen was great of leading other organizations with suggested. Modifications in their process, so with all of these utilities, uh primarily Excel Energy. Do they have, does it have to be their crew? Do they have designated contractors that they are either working with, we can work with um for some of these line relocations? Do they already, are they maximizing their capacity or is it asked, does it have to be an Excel Energy crew? Personnel out on the ground doing the work?
Yes, so we, when we coordinate with utilities, we, we mitigate, mitigate risk on our projects by engaging with them in the pre-design process all the way through. Uh, so we, they know what's coming, uh as soon as we conceptualize a project, we uh. Give them as much of a runway as possible. Uh, this is an example project of uh trying to mobilize them ahead of uh and in conjunction with our, our contractor on the ground. Um, giving them every opportunity to work ahead of and in conjunction with our contractors. Their workers need to, or their, their work needs to be done by their approved contractors, not our contractor on the ground. So their contractors work alongside our contractors and their subcontractors.
They are already subcontracting work on their behalf.
That's right.
They need to do more.
They're, and they're accustomed to working alongside uh other entities. Primaries and subcontractors on these major works projects out in the field.
I'd be curious, um. I think his name's Nathan, Nathan's a nice guy, I. This is the second, if not third, way project that we've seen where it's Excel Energy is plus three hundred days on delays. Um, I know it costs money for them to retain and certify, get insurance, all the things to have subcontractors, but. It does cost everyone in the end. In this, in this case, it's our shared constituents, constituents that they serve, that we serve, um. But these delay in projects, this is the second time, if not third time you've, I've seen a presentation where we've seen a delay from Excel. I just wonder if there's a path forward to um improvement. Uh, even the board could take, I know you're regularly, E L T regularly meeting with Excel Energy, doesn't be my concern.
No, Brian is also part of that team.
Okay, great.
She's very helpful.
I, I have, I have a question, um, I, do, are any of these delays were, were, was there a time where our crews were not, were not ready? When Excel's was slated to start, because I know that sometimes if they deem that. The site's not ready, they just, they leave and then they come back when they ever get, when it gets back into the queue of their schedule, which is why some, I think why some of these delay. Because it's not like sixty three days, we didn't have sixty three days of, of raining, you know, that delayed that, that was, you know, that was, that, I know some of that is, is getting, get back in their queue and them coming to work. But, but then in the meantime, we're stalled. And the other thing is, is, and I, I think I'll, you know, the answer, but is there any world in which that there's a penalty for excessive delays? That we, that is to be charged them so that we're not needing the six hundred and forty K ourselves every time, so as, as an example?
So recognizing that nothing is one hundred percent everyone else's fault and that we are not perfect or our contractor. Um, this chart represents our best attempt, our team's best attempt at identifying where. Uh, delays were caused by not weather, um, and not our contractor's fault, but the fault of others.
Okay.
Um, and, and being, trying to be very earnest in not, not assigning blame, but recognizing that this was. Everything, everything was lined up for them and they were the cause of delay.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
And the way state law is written right now, uh, utilities are required to work with us to get out of our way when. Or to, to relocate their utilities, get out of our ways and. Uh, to work with utilities to relocate when we mobilize uh roadway projects. We don't have any liquidated damages or way to put teeth behind those requirements.
Thank you.
Julie, then Steve. Um. Okay, so we've identified a problem that's consistent and that is not going away anytime soon. Have we, like, is this where a government affairs individual or however that's managed at this organization? Could help build these relationships? Do we, like, what needs to change so the bottleneck can be alleviated? I'm not saying that we're gonna have a project where there's no delays, right, that, that's like not real. Um, but like, how do we get to a point where it's not current state? And what do we need to get there?
I, I believe that, that recognizing that these delays and this project has been running concurrently with the other three projects that are under construction. That we're, we're making progress, that we're sitting down with the executive team and Nathan Steele. Um, that we're sharing our pain and sharing the repercussions um and outcomes. That we're working and communicating and locked up with you all, the board, um, in engaging with your contacts. That we don't want Excel to feel like we are saying, you're ruining our lives. Um, but instead, we're working in partnership with you to solve this problem that we have. Um, I feel like they're hearing us. We are also still. Ta- taking two steps forward, one step back on, say, our York Street project.
Yeah.
Uh, they are showing good faith effort by mobilizing a second contractor is one recent step they took on the York Street Phase Two project. Because we continue to have problems with the contractor they've been using on that project.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so they're showing progress, but not robust progress uh in serving us as a, as a constituent or as a customer of theirs.
And that's only Excel, Excel's not the only one on this list.
Exactly.
So Excel's delays are only two hundred and thirty eight days, but we have Denver Water, Comcast, Century, all, you know, other players here, so like what? I guess I'm just trying to figure out what needs to happen to see a change in this.
And, and I'll just weigh in, I think Brian's right, you know, the recent establishment of the E L T meetings with Nathan have been very helpful, but they are relatively recent. I think we're still kind of working through what's the right information to bring to the table at the same time and work through the list that Nathan brings and that we bring and kind of talk about where the bottlenecks are happening. I think with Excel specifically, we also have to acknowledge that their own systems are not the greatest all the time, uh, and, and somewhat complex. Part of what I think is important is articulating this story this way and really kind of quantifying what those delays are, the, the actual cost of those delays are. What it means on the project timelines and having this available, not just with Excel, with, with everyone else. I do think there's value in from sort of a government affairs standpoint of having some folks who are able to, at a higher level, have some of these conversations and sharing some of these impacts. Because I do see from Nathan an earnest effort to try and like herd off cats, so to speak. But I don't know if it's always been a clear story to Nathan of what the actual impact has been and what it means for us when we're in this room having these conversations. And that's been part of it, is just trying to um develop that and I think their systems mean um. Overhaul, but could be better, could, could be better, um, you know, we can employ that where we can.
Do we have someone on government affairs who's engaging? Yes, or a plan?
I don't know.
Or who's government affairs?
Right now, I don't think we do, but I think that that's an area we need to really build up.
Yeah, I think this is definitely an identified gap and it's not something that's going away, so we need to figure out who owns. Relationships with utilities so that they're seen as like. You know, the person who manages those relationships and how do we continue to have these educational moments of the impacts to Adams County taxpayers? For their delays and I think that that's really important that we clarify, this is, this is not our money, right? This is taxpayer money that is now being wasted because of their delays.
I'm hearing two things. Our government affairs role, is that what you're?
Somebody has to.
Adams County's role, Adams County's role. Um, I also feel as trusted partners in Excel is that they would appreciate the feedback as you laid it out, Dion. And if you're al- already providing that feedback, I know there's incremental change, they're a big entity such as we are. Um, I think that's also feedback that we can give um a soft touch to an executive level. Um, not go and blow them up, I hear that concern as well, but to give them a soft touch to say, we are really facing some challenges and we're all sharing the same constituency. Um, but as you said it, but we'll let you run with it, I'm hearing change, incremental change, not real progressive change.
Well, we will provide talking points to that because Commissioner, I know you all are often in places where the opportunity just arises. So we will continue to give you overviews of what the Excel conversations have been and coordinate a little more closely with these others. Um, but it has been helpful to have some of those discussions. Um, I know that when we, we began with our um water and wastewater utilities, that made a huge difference. And it's just a lot of difference moving forward and compounding, but we'll provide what's going on a little more closely to you all, just in case you're in those spaces and can help.
That's great.
Right, appreciate that. Steve, sorry.
We've talked about this so many times before, I'm still disappointed that we're having to respond to this. Uh, what did they say when you guys shared that eighty page summary with Excel?
Well, I think that predated what these latest changes have been for Excel. Because um, you know, when we first met in person to kick off the more regular meetings, because we've been meeting forever. And the technical teams, of course, meet even more regularly. Um, but they seem to begin to understand that. Remember to compounded upon their issues here have been lack of resources and vision. Where Excel especially is considered in how they are addressing some of the other work they're behind on. And both of these things have really compounded together and that was something that Nathan made us aware of, that I guess we hadn't necessarily put two and two together. In that, but there has been some additional resources put to that issue, so some of their, um.
What issue, what, yeah?
Yeah, I'm about to explain, to the issue of uh meeting the demand of needed service throughout the city. These two things of ensuring that they could get to a lot of redevelopment work that's occurring on behalf of cities, counties, utilities. You know, besides the dry utilities, you have the wet utilities also doing heavy amounts of redevelopment work right now. Plus you have a lot of development demand that they're having a hard time meeting generally with service. So those are the two issues that Excel and frankly, I would wager CenturyLink, Comcast, anyone in the growth span is managing. Is managing at the same time. And when we have had these regular conversations with Excel over the past. Four months or so, um, he's helped us become a lot more aware of that and what they're doing to address some of the demand side stuff. And freeing up resources to also address the redevelopment side. But it, it frankly compounded for them, a lot like it's compounding for us. As we move into our growth areas, we're having a lot of issues of. Things changing and expectations changing, I think, from our population. And we're serving them in ways that maybe we haven't before. And some of these utilities are coming up against a lot of development and redevelopment all at once that they're struggling with.
I, I, here's my, you didn't have my question. And you, like, this is, this is frustrating. I specifically.
Answer it better, that would be great.
How about this? Like, I specifically wanted to know, how did they respond to the eighty page document that has a significant amount of finger pointing by us to them? For all those, uh, additional costs and how have they responded when you talk to them about what presentation we're giving today?
You can fill that in a little bit better.
So I didn't, uh, say you need to read this and respond, uh, so much as, uh, just talk to them about the concerns.
Do they get the report?
The report.
Well, I, I didn't email it to them and say, how do you respond to this? Um.
Okay, let me, it.
Okay, go ahead.
If I, this is extremely important, guys.
Can I, I, I'd like to try as well once it's done.
If, if we set the expectation months ago, years ago, but, and we are failing in a relationship. And we were being pulled numbers, numerous times now that we have a good relationship at the executive level. And we were promised that we have that. And we were even said in different ways, we got it, we got it, we got it. And, and we're putting out on the public record now an eighty page document that really did a lot of finger pointing. This one is a clear, specifically saying, this is where it was the fault of these folks that have caused delays. Like, it was very open and honest and I appreciate the honesty.
Yeah.
But we are failing in the relationship if we are not presenting what we are saying to the public, to our partner. How do we address these issues together? Because you guys come to us with things like this. And then we have to rely on promises that, oh yeah, things are great in the relationship. And then we sit up here and say, something is not working. So I, at this point, would recommend that the board not delegate this anymore. That the relationship has to, issue now has to be addressed, because we are talking hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars that this has cost us. Escalate it to the board to work with Dion, to work directly with Excel, to show some executive top level concern. I agree with Lynn, we don't need to browbeat them, but we need to show the importance of this, because. I am just dumbfounded that we can say that we have a great relationship and then. Keep coming back with these updates. I'm dumbfounded how we can say we have a relationship we're investing in and not give them a heads up that we're going and making public statements about their faults. That are causing hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars. And, and, and when I ask, how did they respond to this? You give me a three minute answer that didn't answer, we did not give them the report. And that is not what you do.
Did speak to.
Listen.
All of the delays and what.
We did not give them the report, but that's not what we do with partners.
Okay. Are you done?
No, I don't.
Emma? So I, I'm actually literally sitting between the two of you, so I don't know if that like helps. I completely agree with, with where Steve is coming from and frankly, most of what you're saying. And I see you agreeing, Alicia.
Yeah.
And so for me, sitting here, um, Brian, you and your team are technical experts.
Yes.
And we need you hand in glove when we do this regional relationship building. But your primary job that we need you to execute on is to be the technical expert and to have a team of proficient technical experts. But we can't do that unless our partners are coming along with us. But I think where the board, I'll speak for myself, where I'm getting confused, like my colleague, is. Gillian ha- has expressed to us that she is really federal and state lobbying, which keeps her real busy.
Mm-hmm.
And Lauren is doing human services, which keeps her real busy. And it's gonna get even busier with the special session and HR one and everything falling apart. So CMO, y'all are a brand new team in the past year assembling. Dion, you've been on the job officially.
Six days.
Six days, six whole days have you actually had the power to make changes and do things that would. Move this bottleneck, because we keep, like, you grew great technical work, you run into a challenge with an external partner. We hear about it after the fact, we come to you and y'all are like, we did our best. And I, I believe that you did. Um, however, where does that external relationship management sit? Because y'all have to run the government and we have jobs as well. And I, and, and we, when we go out. We always need that bridge to the technical expert, but Brian can't come with us to AC Rep or Metro Denver EDC or. Or, you got a job, you know, and it's our job to be out there. So who has that come along with us? And so I know you six days on the job, this is great, you figured it out, you're gonna tell me right when I ask you this. How do we bridge this gap? Because it is costing us a lot of money, time and delays, and time and delays for our residents who experience construction projects that go on a lot longer than they should. So what, what can we expect of a timeline of figuring this out? If the resources are deployed, as I understand it, who is our come alongside person with the board? To make sure that we're well connected to technical staff without overly burdening them or distracting them from their work at hand?
So, think about that really quick, um, but I'm gonna also add, maybe part of your response is, you know. This has been a little bit of a sticking point and it's been internally for a bit.
That's correct.
Um, it is confusing to the board, it has been that Gillian's title literally says government affairs. I understand that she's busy. What did we envision that position to do? Because when I look at you all, our executive leadership team, like, I want you to execute, support. Teams, I want you to do that high level stat, you have, you know, that high level work. And I'm not saying that a relationship with Excel energy is beneath you, but. When I have three executives, two executives, an executive, meeting with a government affairs person. That is a huge investment on us.
Yeah, right.
And so I'm, I'm thinking equal, equal, like, if you're gonna meet with someone, meet with Holly Velazquez, call in Holly. Who I believe is very, very competent. And I know that this is a tough message to give a partner. My experience with Holly being very competent, also being very transparent and forthright, is she would rather hear it from us. Than get sideswiped by her president. Or get sideswiped by an article that's out there about something, someone else, another government partner, another government agency. She takes on that role of understanding these things and really being a mover and shaker in Excel. And I think we should give her that opportunity, but I'm looking one to one of the investment. And I think that there is this gap of service and, you know, we brought Gillian in as a senior. Government affairs and legislative affairs and that staff has doubled. While it was only two, we've added a person, now we have three people that are doing that work.
With the land use, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, with the land use. And then we have a state government affairs contract, a federal government affairs contract. So I think what I'm looking for, I'll speak for myself, is who's doing government affairs for Adams County? Because it cannot just be, I'm state and I'm federal ledge. Unless we make that position that and we hire another government affairs person, but I'm not really looking at expanding. Any positions on our floor, our floors grow exponentially, um, with the addition of several other divisions, departments added to it. So that, those are my concerns. You had a question from Commissioner Pinter on timeline and what does that look like?
Yeah, no, I, I think there's several questions here, so I'm gonna take it apart, because. Part of the question is, how are we managing the relationship with Excel specifically with some of the recent presentations we've given and some of the things we've been working on? And I know there's also kind related to separately talking overall government affairs. And I, I do wanna acknowledge upfront that there is a gap in the government affair space with several areas. We've been doing, um, planning work on our team around, how do we fill that gap? And to your point, I don't know that it's necessarily creating new roles. I think it's clarifying and realigning the roles that we have. Right now, when it comes to the utility space, it is primarily ELT that has been doing a lot of the relationship work with utilities. That's not ideal and not necessarily where we want to go, but right now, that is a lot of what that government affairs with utilities is looking like. When it comes to these specific product, projects, and I'm gonna try and clarify, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian. But, um, in developing the after action report that we looked at. We did coordinate with Excel on digging into the history, the actions, the causation of all the things that were in the after action report. I don't know if that translated to actually delivering the report and asking for a response. And I think that's probably what Brian is kinda indicating is. That was a, a joint effort with everyone to really understand the root cause of those delays and those issues that we had in the after action report. We may have missed a step in actually sitting down with them and debriefing the report. And so that's something, you know, that we, we may need to do. And we have upcoming meeting with Nathan, it may not be Nathan that's the right person to.
He should have the authority.
But I think, you know, to close the loop, because we did do a lot of work together to understand what happened and, and develop that report and to be able to share that out. With the presentation today, I don't know, Brian, if we had keyed that up for Nathan, but I think that's a, a, a fair question of how are we closing? The loop when we're here in this public forum, you know, presenting this information that they know this is what we're presenting and that we can talk through. How do we, you know, avoid this in the future? I also have to acknowledge that there's a, a lot of lead time with these projects. And we have some recent efforts that we've been working on with relationship building, with coordinating on these projects. But you're still gonna see some lingering things that are happening for projects that have been started further upstream that while we're working on it. We still have to kind of get through this long pipeline of projects that are already, you know, delays already. How already started and that kind of thing. And so there's, there is a bit of a lag here as we're working through how to improve this with what you're gonna see today. I, I don't know if it's an appeal for patience necessarily, but just the reality is a lot of these things have been problematic and we're working through that. As we're working through, it's gonna take a little time to actually see the, the fruits of these, these efforts for current projects. Um, but they're coming and this is an ongoing effort, so I don't know if that's the clarity. And as far as timeline, we do have some, I guess. Proposals around government affairs and we've just been, uh, I've just been getting ready to sit down with you all about what that looks like. It has been six days, but we actually are, uh, thinking about it and working on it. So that, but it is a gap, it is something that we must realign and, and figure out.
Kathy?
I appreciate what you said and, 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 and towards the end, you're extremely accurate that. This, our relationship, how they view us, what they consider acceptable work to deliver to Adams County. Did not happen overnight, nor will it be fixed overnight. But we're in, but obviously we're, this is a high, high priority and I think so. I think we're all in agreement on that, but I, but I, I totally take, I really take that point, that's very true. They're a big ship to, to turn, you know?
Agree.
They all are, they all are.
Yeah, including ours. Uh, Steve.
Yeah, let me clarify. I'm not saying that you are responsible for the relationship with Excel. I think what I'm hearing from you guys is that you're working with them tactically in the implementation levels. And you're doing the best you can with whatever they can do, whatever you can do. So I wanna just clarify, I think you're doing exactly what you should be doing, which is identifying the issue. Escalating it to us, so we're not saying, what the hell is Brian and his team doing wrong to have to come back and do all this? The answer is, they're not, you're not. It's actually showing, here's the root cause of some of these change orders, here's the root cause of some of these delays. You're doing exactly what we need you to do, so thank you.
Thank you.
What I'm saying is above you, we need to, this, the horseshoe here needs to come together as executives. And as, when we hear that there's an escalation point, which I think the trigger has been pulled a few times. We need to own the fact that we need to do a better job of taking it from that point at the escalation point. Identifying what we need to do, because I think this is a go to Holly.
It is.
Go to the, you know, I think this is, this is Andrew Holder, like, and it's nothing, it's Nathan, Nathan is outstanding. But it makes sense that you continue to work with Nathan on these tactical things, but I'm not sure what happens behind their curtain. But that needs to be escalated on their side and our side. And sometimes we just need to give the executives, say, look, we want this to be a partnership and work together. We don't want them, as Lynn said, being sideswiped by a Denver Post article, because. Denver Posters, Colorado, some would love to pick up the fact that we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on delays by our utilities and they love the idea of that conflict. I look at what you're doing, is presenting the issue to us, saying, help us understand what's going on in the trenches. And it's up to us to build the strategic relationships while you continue to, uh, maintain the tactical relationship. So you're do, you guys are doing great. I wanna clarify that, because that's not what, uh, I wanted to, and then, um. Alicia's answer was right, it's just, my question was, is the response? And so we will continue to work as an executive team on figuring out that side. I'm optimistic that we can get through it, but I think it would be a strong strategic mistake if we keep just guessing that it's gonna get better. I think this board needs that help and I think this board needs to work with ELT and we can do it together.
I agree with everything that's been said. I feel like the energy, I feel like we're converging on agreement of like what needs to come next. What I feel like, for me, I feel like Steve is touching on, is for a lot of, um. Career technical staff, which we need to execute government correctly. What happens with external organizations is just sort of like the weather that comes. And you might read a weather report, but you can't change it. And what the board is used to is like, no, if we see weather coming, we make changes. And so we need sort of that intermediary where CMO team, under your direction, Dion, as you see everyone's role and their staff. Help the board influence this weather system, this ecosystem that we're in with these other. Corporate leaders as well as like municipal leaders to influence that environment. And so that's where I think the board feels a little frustration sometimes, because. We believe it is part of our job to change the ecosystem to make it a better place for Adams County residents. And our organization to thrive. And like Kathy said, they give you the work product that you've told them you're willing to accept. Um, I think it's a little bit of a paraphrase, but I think that's what you're getting at.
Yeah.
And so what we're trying, like, the board, I, I see us pushing, like, we can change this ecosystem, it's not just a weather report.
Mm-hmm.
And so from you, Dion, we'd like to see how you see us engaging in a way that we're being honest. About the technical fixes we're asking for while not burdening our, our specific staff who need to be on project. Okay, thank you for, let me put that, that was, felt important for me to add, okay?
So, how it comes from this conversation, I, I really appreciate the context. Um, I think that in our relationship with Nathan, uh, Tony is one of our other primary contacts. They will find nothing in the after action review that's surprising, because it is the out, the content of that report is the outcome of every conversation that we have with them. What Alicia captured is the response that we get from, excuse me, from Excel and every conversation that. We're working on it, we've got problems too, which is reasonable, but not acceptable.
True. Probably true, but at the same time.
Uh, and that's where Commissioner Pinter's comments come into, come into play of, no, we need to work to change the climate. Um, and, and change what is acceptable to Commissioner Hanson's, uh, uh, comments. Um, next steps on this project, uh, we're working on closeout, uh. Uh, walkthrough items, punch list items in Q two. Uh, we're anticipating construction completion on the project in Q three, uh, which is very exciting. It's one of our four projects that we'll see completed this year and in early into next year. Um, and our recommendation, of course, is to, um, approve change order six. I wanna provide a little bit of context on the starting point of change order six and how we worked with him in construction. Uh, the starting point of their, uh, uh, task was eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, our team worked in negotiations with them on, uh, uh, saving about, oh, it, it came to, uh. Uh, sixty, seventy thousand dollars in just line by line edits. Um, and then we talked with them about, hey, can, what else can we do to cut out some of the, uh. Some of the costs here on the project. And we, we got them to, uh, cut out about sixteen percent of their ask. In liquidate, or not liquidated damages, but, uh, OSC dot standard one oh nine point one. Um, where they were like, you know what, we recognize that you, you have a budget on this project. We can cut, cut costs on our side and they, they cut out that sixteen percent cost on their end. Cut costs on our side and they they cut out that sixteen percent cost on their end. So they recognized and we're going to work, that's awesome, uh in good faith. And that's how we arrived at the six hundred and forty from their original ask, so they they worked with us. We worked with them and that's how that's how we got to today. Uh final project cost is, and this is the final change order, eleven point seven billion dollars. Uh and we're recommending uh approval. So any any other questions uh that me or the the team that we brought today can answer?
Just a quick one, so when you completion of the roadway, does that include the artwork?
Yeah, I had a two percent for the arts.
Road done and then the art comes later, so I was just curious.
I'm sorry, is that is that right uh uh schedule was? Sorry. The foundations for the artwork, what's the timeline for Moscow for the artworks?
That's fine.
It'll still be about a year. Uh it it is gonna come later.
That's fine.
Okay.
I mean, that's actually not surprising. It's hard to get art and a road done all at the same time.
Yeah, Stephen and Julie, then we'll wrap.
I think what you just provided is a good and uh update to provide when we do these change orders for the record because a lot of times people think, oh. Whenever there's like a bump in the, I meant like, no pun intended, like some sort of bump in the project. That these uh outside contractors will always try to find and take advantage of some opportunity to 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 get more money. And we're just signing up and we're not and I think what you guys show in what your explanation was is that your tactical relationships and technical expertise. Of, yeah, they may have asked for eight hundred thousand dollars of, you know, initially, but by rolling up your sleeves and getting into the details. Because you know how to get into those details and say, yeah, that's, we don't need to do that and maybe we could work together, that shows. Uh the public that we're not just uh doing a blank check to the private industry and that also shows that. Your tactical relationships in the trenches uh matter a lot, so thank you for that explanation. I've got. I think that's actually a precedent that should be set because change orders explain like, here, we have done the due diligence, make sure this isn't just a. Old fifteen year old, you know, like back in the day, fifteen years, we're changed orders, we're just like, signed off kind of carp one. You guys are doing the work to make sure that it's it's actually necessary uh requests for the change order, so thank you very much for that.
Um my question is, so I'm assuming this is coming to us for public hearing, is this next week?
Uh this will be two weeks out, so I'm anticipating twenty ninth or uh depending on. Where purchasing gets it into the pipeline possibly the week following.
I actually would appreciate if we do put this um as an item under county manager so that you could kind of explain. Um what you did, that context really matters, I think, to the public. Um cuz it really helped me also just see the work that you are doing behind the scenes to help save. The county money as much as possible by leveraging your relationship um and the work that you're doing, so yeah, I mean, it's. I I think it's, it it is what it is and the and the change order, yeah, should be. Right, you know, I approve this, but it's also, let's tell that story to um the public when it comes up for a vote.
Absolutely, and for whatever reason, whenever I get at that podium and I know the camera's pointing at me, I just get nervous as hell.
You do great. Nobody knows that.
You just did good right now, so just do this.
You did great.
Great job, nice.
Very good, well, thank you all for your time and for the feedback and discussion today.
Thank you.
Thanks for names.
Staff.
Thanks, everybody.